I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Village Board for September 24th, 2024. Would you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lieutenant Clerk, would you please call the roll?
President Deesamone?
Here.
Trustee Frye?
Here.
Trustee Lomax?
Here.
Trustee Penicola?
Here.
Trustee Perez?
Here.
That's four.
This time we'll move to public comment. Does anyone wish to address the board? If so, please approach the podium and state your name.
Uh, yes. Mr. Peter George?
Jesus.
George Jase- George Aces, I'm sorry.
Move to the next person.
All right. Loretta S- Slowwick?
Yes, I'm yielding my time to you.
Next one. Next person.
Chris McCullough?
Yolli Marta.
Well, there's nobody here to speak, so.
Okay, don't.
Good evening. My name is Peter Georgiades. The property that we own is 26 North Center. We live here in town on Walnut. Um, I was before this board, uh, three times, I believe, this month, or twice, community of whole, and, uh, so it's twice this is the third time. The last time I was here, Mr. Summers, our acting village manager, interrupted me. And that's why I had some people extend my time tonight. So I thank you for extending my time. Number one, why am I addressing the board? We're talking about the property that's here for this development. But the elephant on the block is the 40,000 square feet here. Um, I twisted around, but the 40,000 square feet that's next to the development and next to my property is being allowed 50- 53-foot semis coming down, destroying our property. And, um, not only destroying our property, we got new streets right now. I mentioned to Mr. Summers, a perfect anchor store to support this, so we could regentrify the block by putting a perfect business there. I think I had a perfect business for that development. So when I had these pictures, I had a- we- we left here regarding the hearing and we ended up at Green Street. So when I ended up at Green Street, I had these pictures and, uh, I guess the group was too much of it. It was five, six of yous and Frank, uh, I guess you left, Mr. Deesamone left with a couple other, but Armando Perez was there with the clerk. I wanted to show him these pictures, these pictures that are on my property. Word for word, Armando, he says, "I don't give a fuck what your wife's picture, what you were gonna show me." Word for word, there was nine other people at that table that witnessed it. I'll give you the date, we'll pull up the- the thing. Very inappropriate. Matter of fact, I wrote to your colleague that night addressing what you said to me. And you said to me and my wife, very unprofessional. And very retaliation because of the conversation we had, because you had a personal agenda on my property. You had a contract on it. And they didn't honor your contract, they honored mine. So you guys continue retaliating against me and my wife and our property. Is that correct? Is that correct, Armando? You wanna answer that? Because I got something else for you to show you. Do you know these two individuals? Do you? You and Frank? Do you guys know these guys? Cause I guess I have no other choice to go to the feds, subpoena your guys' phone records, and then we'll find out from there. These are not false accusations. This was on my recording. I asked the police chief to show up. I had extensive conversation with the detective about this. Because we bought the property, because your personal agenda, Armando. So what are we doing? We're monopolizing the real estate industry, Frank, for your personal agenda? Is that what we're doing? Because when I ask you the questions, who's the developer? Who's the contractor on this property? And then I got Poskey telling me that the tax revenue we're gonna get, the property's gonna be paid back 30 years. It's gonna take 30 years to get their money back for the Village of Bensonville. That's a prime piece of real estate, what I told you. And the development is, I'm not against it. What I'm against is what I'm seeing, and I understand. And I think that me and you, when we had our conversation here in front of Joe Montana, which he could answer some questions for me also, that I have some questions for him. Yeah, Frank, mhm, it got too far. It did, buddy. And now me and you, you know, you took it personal. And music in the park, what you did was out of line, what you did to my wife. And she was there, and she's been affected by this for a long time. And you did it in front of our personal friend, actually my personal friend, but a colleague for you, what you did. You made a mistake, Frank. What I request for you, before I continue, you should've had a meeting with me. But you told me I ain't gonna fucking talk to you, word for word. That's what you said, Frank.
Your language, sir.
No problem, Mr. Montana. I apologize to the board and to this- to this, uh, room here. I'm sorry about my language. But you put yourself in my shoes, where these people wouldn't have let my kid that just got back from the Air Force to stay in my unit where ladies sit there for 97 years. And I didn't break the rules, and they fined me for $750 a day if I put my kid there, that's an Air Force, him and his fiancee, that came back from Japan, from Okinawa, after being there for seven years. How would you guys like not letting your kids stay there? I could tell you Peter Murphy says that's wrong, and he works for you, Joe. And Joe, why don't you tell me why you paid this guy his campaign, over $20,000? It's on record. $20,000. I don't know how many years, two years, three years, whatever it is. How about St. Jude's? How about Tunnel for Towers? There's so many different agencies that they give the money to him. If you give $20,000 to him, do you give it to all the other towns that you give it to, Frank? I mean, Joe, do you give it to all- if that's how much money you mean, that means the taxpayers are paying for this money. You're double charging us. Yeah, mhm, I got you. No answer. So semis are driving down here, and how they driving? How they getting away with it? 53-foot semi, Frank, you know the answer. How they getting away with it? Please, tell me. Then I got a problem. We got Evan Summers getting top quality paid. You got another person helping through, which is a gentleman, I found out. He's a top-notch guy. And now you had liens on the city hall, contractors failing over here, and now I'm gonna tell you another thing. The other 60 condos, it took two developers to not finish that. It took five years. So it took the seniors longer to get down there because you hired someone that wasn't qualified. And I told you, you told me, you- you outburst to me and said, "If I wanted to have so much of a say-so, I should've bought that place." That's what you told me last- last week. I told you I have the property I have. I'm just here to help the town. I'm not trying to bad rap you, but you know what? You did this to yourself, Frank. That's what you did. And you got some people around you, and I understand it. That's what you didn't understand. I understand it. Got it?
Thank you.
So what I'm- no, I'm not done. What I'm gonna tell you, Frank, this is where I'm at. Because there's been criminal activity towards me and my wife, I have some solid words for you, Frank. I'm gonna ask you to resign tonight. Second of all, you can laugh, but I'm gonna ask Joe Montana, you can do it on your own, or I'll do it myself, I'm gonna ask for Lori Lightfoot to come in and look at this town, because when she looked into Dalton, I said this to Chief Schultz a year and a half ago. This is a mirror image, so I don't know. I think you're smarter than she is, and you have a different way of making your money. It's called pay to play. It's been all over New York. And just right now, Ford Heights Mayor went to jail. Ed Burke went to jail. Don't want to see it happen to you or your family, Frank. Step down. Step down, Frank.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That concludes public comment. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the September 10th, 2024 Village Board meeting? You have a motion? There's a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, do we have modifications to the minutes? Please call the roll.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Penicola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's four.
Motion carries and the minutes are approved. Next item of business is to approve the warrant amount of $2,466,836.01. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
There's a second.
Second.
Being, uh, motion and a second, do we have any discussion? Call the roll.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Penicola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's four.
Motion carries and warrant is approved. Would the deputy village clerk please read the 13 ordinances and resolutions on the consent agenda that were discussed at the committee of the whole meeting?
Number one, ordinance of the Village of Bensonville, DuPage, Cook County, Illinois, amending the Bensonville Village Code to eliminate the annual vehicle sticker tax and licensing fees for village residents. Two, ordinance adopting a Vision Zero policy for the Village of Bensonville. Three, ordinance granting variations for a new daycare development at 1347 Irving Park Road. Four, ordinance granting variations for a new multi-mixed use development at 101 Main Street. Five, ordinance declaring certain village-owned property a surplus property and authorizing disposal. Six, ordinance denying special use permit motor vehicle repair and/or service at 1081 Entry Drive. Seven, resolution authorizing the villages intend to submit applications for community development block CDBG grants for the 2025 CDBG residential street lighting project and CDBG roadway and water main improvements Belmont-Addison Center project. Eight, resolution authorizing the execution of amendment number two, final to the engineering services agreement with Engineering Enterprises, Inc. for the 2023 CDBD project, Brown Gate Subdivision Improvements Project, for an increase of $22,654.49 for a revised not-to-exceed amount of $182,714.49. Nine, resolution authorizing the execution of change order number one, final with RW Dumping Company for the Ch- Crestbrook Subdivision Roadway Reconstruction Project for an increase of $16,479.99 for a revised final contract amount of $1,201,230.36. Ten, resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with Vion Construction Company, Inc., for a water main repair near 1201 Irving Park Road in the not-to-exceed amount of $16,250. Eleven, resolution authorizing the entry into a sales agreement with Midwest Field Solutions for the Memorial Field Project at Redmond Park in the amount of $48,000. Twelve, resolution approving the entry into a sales agreement with Sport Court Midwest for the basketball court refinishing project at Redmond Park in the- in the amount of $132,900. Thirteen, resolution authorizing a license agreement for food and beverage services operations at the edge ice room between Golden Nest Restaurant, Inc. and the Village of Bensonville.
Is there a motion to approve the 13 ordinances and resolutions listed on the consent agenda and is read by the deputy clerk?
You have a motion?
There's a second.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Penicola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's four.
Motion carries and items on the consent agenda are approved. Under administration, the ordinance of the Village of Bensonville, DuPage, Cook County, Illinois, approving our first amendment to the police chief employment agreement. Is there a motion to approve?
Yeah, motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Marisol, do we have discussion on this?
Yeah, thank you. So, uh, the village entered an employment contract-
Is the mic on?
Now it is, thank you. Uh, the village entered an employment contract back- back in July, the- the board may remember that, with Chief of Police Dan Schultz. Uh, it was determined, um, after review of that contract, that health insurance supplement stipend that was included in that employment contract was more expensive than including the chief of police in the employer group health insurance plan. And so the amendment you see before you is to amend that portion of the contract only, is to add the chief of police to the employer group plan.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Penicola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's four.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Under finances, resolution receiving and placing on file, the Village of Bensonville's annual comprehensive financial report and management letter from the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2023. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, we have discussion.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. President and Board of Trustees. Tonight, we have John Wasaki of GW and Associates. He is the auditor of the CPA firm who audited our past year's 2023 calendar year audit, and he's also been with us since December 31st, 2017. He is going to give a brief presentation and an overview of the audit, and then at the end, he's gonna be available to answer any questions. But I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank John and his associates. They've been a great- they were a great help to me this year. I had started just two weeks before the audit started. They're wonderful people, so I'm gonna turn it over to John now.
Thank you. I'll just briefly go over the annual comprehensive financial report. After the introductory section, the first page of the financial section is our independent auditor's report. And, um, as in previous years, we are, um, expressing a, what we call a clean or unmodified opinion regarding the financial statements, um, based on our auditing procedures that we perform. I like to point out that the report itself is responsibility and management. We assist in preparing the report as kind of a non-audit service, but really the purpose of the audit is testing the information and making sure it's in compliance with the proper accounting principles and fairly stated. A- after the independent auditor's report is management's discussion and analysis, and um, that provides some good information regarding, uh, the, uh, results of operations for the year and, uh, uh, the financial condition of the village. So that's, uh, something that's, uh, good to read for kind of a nice, uh, analysis and overview. After that, on page four, we have the statement of net position. Um, that shows a column for governmental activities and business-type activities. It shows all the assets and liabilities of the village as of December 31st, 2023, uh, includes both the capital assets and, uh, current assets and the current liabilities and long-term liabilities. Um, and it comes down to a net position for governmental activities, uh, at the end of the year of 124.6 million. Business-type activities, 90.1 million. After that is the statement of activities, shows the expenses, uh, for the year. For governmental activities, about 26.1 million. Business-type activities, 10.6 million. And then it shows, uh, any revenues that are related to those various functions, and then general revenues. And it comes down to a increase in net position for governmental activities of 17.5 million for the year, and 3.7 million increase for business-type activities. After that, we have the balance sheet, uh, that shows, uh, the individual funds of the village. Uh, the general fund, which is the main operating fund, um, has a ending fund balance of 23 million for the year. Um, shows all the other major funds, and then one column for all the non-major funds. Um, so total governmental, uh, funds have a fund balance of 68.1 million as of the end of the year. Page nine is the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. For the year, the general fund had a increase in fund balance of 3.8 million. Um, total, uh, increase for all governmental funds, about 3.2 million. Then we have statement of net position for the proprietary funds and statement of activities for the proprietary funds. Um, we have the pension funds, we have the, uh, footnotes that have a great deal of information. Uh, after that is some additional information regarding the pension funds, um, and, uh, funding of those. Also budget versus actual comparisons for, uh, the various funds, and then some additional statistical information after that. So, uh, a- as I mentioned, this, uh, as opposed to just an annual financial report, this is an annual comprehensive financial report, so it has a lot of additional, uh, information. And, uh, it also in- has been receiving the, uh, Government Finance Officers Association Award for Excellence in Financial Reporting. Um, and, uh, it's been submitted again for 2023, uh, for that award. There's also two smaller reports. Uh, one is a required letter to the board, basically summarizing the audit, um, talking about, uh, some of the significant estimates, any changes in accounting policies. Uh, we're required to say whether there were any disagreements with management or any difficulties encountered in performing the audit. There- there were none, so that's good. Um, it also includes all of our, uh, audit adjustments that were made, as well as waived adjustments for immaterial items. And then finally, um, we have the report on internal control over financial reporting. Sometimes call that a management letter, and it includes, um, any, uh, material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. Uh, we didn't report any material weaknesses, but we do have a couple significant deficiencies. One had to do with, um, uh, recording, uh, a one of the village's investments. Um, the, uh, investment statement was a little tricky to read, and a former finance director made an error in- in recording that, but, uh, it was fixed during the audit. Um, and then the other, uh, finding had to do with, uh, general internal controls over financial reporting. There are a number of audit adjustments and things that needed to be corrected, uh, but, you know, that seemed to be mainly a result of, um, the, uh, changes in, uh, in the finance director position, uh, that had occurred during the audit period. Uh, so hopefully that will go away in the future then. Uh, are there any questions?
Any questions from our board? Thank you.
Thank you.
Please call the roll.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Penicola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's four.
Motion carries and resolution is approved. Under the police department's and ordinance of the Village of Bensonville, DuPage, Cook County, Illinois, amending chapter three of Title V of the Bensonville Village Code to regulate stop signs, stop sign intersection. Is there a motion to approve?
Yeah.
There's a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, Chief, do you have discussion?
Yes, sir. This is a intersection where a child was hit by a car, so we involved Public Works and we did a study of the signs in the area, and we deemed that we should make that a four-way stop, so it's safer to cross, and we're gonna change a couple other signs. Um, Joe Karachi and Mike Branick deserve extra credit because then they went through and- and looked at other village signs and other village intersections that would be affected and recommended, because their village engineers recommended ones we should include. So we included those in this as well, and they did a ton of work codifying the rest of the stop signs and making sure they were all listed in our ordinance.
Any questions on the board?
No.
Nice work, gentlemen. Please call the roll.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Penicola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's four.
Motion carries and the ordinance is passed. Under Public Works, there's a resolution authorizing the execution of change order number one with Viking Chemical Corporation for the purchase of aluminum sulfite for an increased amount of $11,000 for revised purchase order amount of $23,320. Is there a motion to approve?
Yeah, motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, Joe, we have discussion?
Yeah, so aluminum sulfate is used to keep our phosphorus levels down. Uh, phosphorus is one of those, uh, chemicals that we are trying to reduce in our streams. Um, due to hot weather this year, we've had a pretty hot, uh, summer. Uh, we've used more alum than we typically would or anticipate, so we have in front of you a change order to purchase additional alum to get us through the end of the year, um, and make sure that our phosphorus levels in our discharge water is according to our permit.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Penicola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's four.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Two is a resolution authorizing the execution of change order number one with PVS Mini Bulk Incorporated for purchase of and delivery of sodium thos- thioculfate?
Thioculfate.
For an increased amount of $25,500 for a revised amount of $49,975. Is there a motion?
Yeah, motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, Joe?
So we utilize a lot of chlorine when we treat our water for the wastewater treatment plant. This chemical is actually used to de-chlorinate it before it hits our streams, so that we don't kill all of our fish in our streams. Um, so sodium thioculfate, this was a test that we did this year. Thioculfate is replacing bisulfate, which is another, uh, chemical that is a little bit more caustic, a little bit more, um, less- less safe to handle. So we tried thioculfate this year. Um, we're finding out that we're using more thioculfate than we were bisulfate. Uh, so we're gonna finish off the year this way, reevaluate the- the cost of safety here. I think we still may continue with thioculfate. I think it's a safer way to go, but it is costing us a little bit more money. Um, so we approved the contract back in May, I believe, and we're exceeding that contract with our thioculfate just because we're using more of it to treat our chlorine.
Any questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Penicola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's four.
Motion carries and resolution is approved. Uh, President's remarks, we have a proclamation recognizing the month, uh, September 15th through October 15th. That's Hispanic Heritage Month. So would the deputy clerk please read the proclamation?
Hispanic Heritage Month in the Village of Bensonville, September 15th to October 15th, 2024. Whereas each year from September 15th to October 15th, our nation observes Hispanic Heritage Month to celebrate the histories, cultures, and contributions of Americans whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month begins on September 15th, the anniversary of the independence for Latin American countries, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, and Honduras, with Mexico celebrating its independence on September 16th and Chile on September 18th. And whereas the Hispanic community has had a profound and positive influence on our country through their strong commitment to family, faith, hard work, and service, significantly enhancing the cultural, economic, and social fabric of the United States. And whereas in the Village of Bensonville, we are fortunate to be home to a diverse Hispanic population that enriches our community through business, cultural, education, and civic engagement, contributing to the vibrancy and strength of our village. And whereas the contributions of Hispanic Americans, both past and present, are essential to the success and progress of Bensonville, and we recognize the importance of fostering an inclusive environment where all residents are celebrated for their cultural heritage. Now therefore, Frank Deesamone, Village President, does hereby proclaim September 15th to October 15th, 2024, as Hispanic Heritage Month in the Village of Bensonville. He encourages all residents to join him in celebrating his rich heritage and valued- valuable contributions of Hispanic Americans and in promoting an inclusive community that embraces our shared values and diversity. Affixed on this 24th day of September, 2024.
Is there a motion in support of the proclamation?
You have a motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Penicola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's four.
Motion carries. Couple other announcements. Next copy with the Village President and Village Board, we have this Saturday, September 28th, from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM at Sunset Park on Grove. We encourage all residents to come out to this casual neighborhood meeting. It has been a great opportunity to ask questions and get village information in an informal setting. Please see the Village website for details on upcoming dates. And the Wilkes Halloween display comes to life beginning this Friday from 7:00 to 10:00. And it will continue every Friday and Saturday through the month of October, so please see the Village website for more information. This will conclude the Village- This will conclude the village president's report. Since we don't have a village manager, there is no report. Do we have a village attorney?
I have no report.
Is there any unfinished business coming for the board tonight?
There is no.
Is there any new business coming for the board tonight?
There is none.
Is there a need for executive session?
There is not.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Penicola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
The motion carries and we are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.